Let's go ahead and call the meeting order, Mr. Lester. Would you take a roll please?
Yes, Chairman. Start off with a call to order a roll call, Andrew Hensley.
Here.
Lou Anwal.
Here.
Terri Dye.
Here.
Dave Eaton.
Here.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
Anna Kaiser.
Here.
And Steve Breeding.
Here.
Sir, you have court.
Okay, if we stand then with the question of that Jim Little to do that and remain standing for please. After please.
Oh, we're uncovered. I would appreciate it so loving heavenly Father. We think for the top opportunity that we have to assemble as residents of this county as board supervisors and all that are all here for. Or we would create it that we're all here for a common goal, then it's really advanced into our county or what's it for our county? Or we may need different paths to this, but ultimately our goal is the same. Or we create it to look down for God blessing both now and then that come along us as individuals in this county as a whole. Or we pray for safety throughout this holiday weekend, Lord, that you would continue to bless the festivities. And Lord bless all decisions and give it to the proper discernment of all that are making these decisions. With a precious and holy name we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda as everybody has an opportunity to look at the agenda. If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Have a motion and second any discussion? If not, all in favor, see that I've seen eye.
Ah.
All opposed, white sign, there aren't none. Okay, next item of business is approval of these minutes. Will, can we approve all these as a, as one, in one motion?
Is that, you're referring to just the minutes?
Yeah, all four, eight, all three of them.
You could take them up in the block if there's no objection.
Okay.
I had one thing, Mr. Chair, on the third. There's a H and a G in there and they're exactly the same, so probably just got to put it in twice.
Anybody else have any changes need to be made to the agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and approve that with changes noted by Mr. Hensley.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion needs a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a motion to approve the June 3rd, June 10th, and June 29th minutes with the modifications, corrections noted by Mr. Hensley. All in favor of this motion signify the same eye.
Ah.
All opposed, white sign, there aren't none. Okay, next we have approval of our expenditures.
I'll make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay our bills. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, see that I've seen eye.
Ah.
All opposed, white sign, there aren't none. Okay, now we come to, we have one committee appointment here. And I understand that Ms. Nunley resigned as a schools representative, correct, Mr. Lester?
Yes, sir.
And they've asked that we appoint Karen Clay as their representative. So I'll just open the board to non-missions.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion for Karen Clay, she's in my district.
All right, have a motion?
I'll second it.
All right, any other non-missions? Okay, I'll close the non-missions. All in favor of appointing Karen Clay, will this be for the un, uh, uncompleted term of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, which will be through October, so we'll have to make another one in September.
Yes.
All in favor, Ms. Clay, signify the same eye.
Ah.
All opposed, white sign, there aren't none. Okay. Okay, now we're down to citizens comment period. Do we have a signing sheet somewhere?
It's about out there.
Okay, first on the sheet I have Jim Gilbert, or Jim Will, excuse me. We're strong.
I'm Jim Will, sixteen sixty Copperwood Road, District One. Uh, coming as I did last, I want to say just last week, I was going to say last month. Uh, for consideration, I appreciate the board approving the Ag Week in the County and, uh...
In conjunction with that, we have started a program, we're going into each of the schools, uh, along with the public library, and doing an Ag presentation there of a program that the state has called Ag in the Classroom. So we'll be doing that. Uh, and each, along with a, one private school so far has reached out, and that's the Learning Center in Castlewood. So, uh, we'll be glad to be, we'll be going there and making presentations. If anyone else wants us to do an Ag in the Classroom presentation, let us know. Uh, the other thing is, I'm looking at my clock, gee, I can talk forever. Um, but no, on September the fifth, we're going to be making presentations to these. Uh, we now have thirty-nine Virginia Century Farms in Russell County. Uh, we had one, the Mead Farm over in District One that, District Two, excuse me, they are out of. District One or Two, High Point Road?
One.
One, okay. Uh, District One that, uh, just received their certification. Uh, so we have thirty-nine now, we'd like to get more. We still have the largest representation of Century Farms in the southwest Virginia region, so I'm very proud of that fact. Uh, but we're going to be making presentations to each of those at the Russell County Fair. Horse Show Night for the County Horse Show at six o'clock, that'll be September the fifth. And we are honored to have Matt Larr, uh, our Secretary of Agriculture, will be coming down to make that presentation. Also, uh, to view the fair, and hopefully he can be here in time to see a few other agricultural related things, including farm-to-table. So, uh, you know, we'd like to make that a success. It's not often we get a chance to showcase our agriculture in the county. And we're very pleased as the, the TAC, the Experience Russell Tourism, and the Agritourism Subcommittee to be able to host this. So we hope that we can have a good attendance at the presentation that'll be there on the, uh, fifth, there on that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Tammy Garrett.
I'm Tammy Garrett from Lebanon, good morning. Uh, this morning I wanted to address some issues that I see as long-term challenges for our county and other counties in southwest Virginia. Historically, our area has been taken advantage of by coal barons and others out to make big money. Uh, questionable enterprises because of our location and our rural challenges, um, have been, um, in the past difficult. Um, I think we need to focus our efforts on growing small and family businesses in our area to enrich not only our economy, but our investment in our people. Um, we need people that care about our area. We need more small businesses which can help us more than one big business that takes our tax breaks and then leaves us high and dry. This is called social and economic justice. And we are going to ask for that for our county, no more being taken advantage of in our area. Entities such as solar farms, data processing centers, small nuclear reactors, and yes, private mega landfills are questionable proposals and raise legitimate concerns for citizens for their health, safety, and the environment. These enterprises are not comparable to a new grocery store or hardware store coming into the community. If the local governing board is considering such a proposal, they should be required to be transparent with the community and not work on these concerning projects for maybe up to seven years or more and keep it secret from the citizens. I propose that projects such as these that may have significant health and safety effects on the community be discussed in public meetings, not in closed meetings. Again, these projects are very different from a new store coming into town. A referendum for these type of projects should also be required. And lastly, we all know politicians and big money make poor bedfellows for the people. Our local government should not be tainted by conflict of interest and politicians and elected leaders being in the back pockets of millionaires. If you are in a government position and you are following the money rather than your ethics and your morals, your conscience should be telling you, you're wrong. We expect our elected and non-elected government officials to do the right thing for us, not for the millionaires. We expect social and economic justice for all Russell County citizens, not just the rich ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. That's all I have on the list, but I'll open it up if anybody else wants to make comment. Once, twice? Wouldn't quickness, was it, Jared?
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to, once again, thank you guys for stopping negotiations on the landfill. But I wanted to address the topic of the ordinance. Um, in ninety-one and ninety-three, we had an ordinance that banned private landfills in this county. And that was done as a direct response to an incinerator and waste disposal site that would have gone on, uh, in Booty. And, um, everything that made it a bad idea to do one then was still a bad idea when we thought about Moss Three. So I just wanted to thank y'all again and encourage you to strengthen that ordinance and, uh, you know, maybe put forth a new one that, uh, makes it a little more difficult next time something like this comes knocking. But thank you all for your work on it.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, I'll close public comment and we'll get on with the rest of the meeting. I don't see any constitutional officers here, do you, Lonzo?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll dispense with that part of the report. Now I have the county attorney's reports and requests. Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in the county attorney section of your agenda, you'll find two items, both relating to C-Cor LLC, who I see representatives from C-Cor here today, may wish to speak. Um, addressing the board's concerns, at the last meeting I was in attendance at, um, we needed to put some additional, uh, security around the issue of, uh, any, I guess, it would be patients or, um, individuals that would be put into treatment at a C-Cor facility here in Lebanon. And, um, several members of the board had concerns about those who had been convicted of sexual crimes or any sort of, um, crimes of a sexual nature. And so what I did is develop a contract between, uh, the county and C-Cor LLC and its owners that would prevent anyone convicted of a certain number of enumerated crimes in the contract, all dealing with, uh, crimes of a sexual nature as well as any federal crime. So, um, you'll see in your packet, you've got a four-page contract there, uh, titled C-Cor LLC Agreement that I believe addresses those concerns. Um, the contract does say that in a single instance, anyone admitted to the C-Cor facility in Russell County that is, has been convicted of one of those crimes or any federal crime, uh, would be a breach of the contract which would require immediate repayment of any amounts that the county agrees to expend on C-Cor's behalf as well as one hundred thousand dollars per individual admitted to C-Cor's premises in violation of the contract. That's about as strong as a, um, set of, uh, I guess we could say guardrails on this as I could put on it. Um, and that agreement would be subject to your all's approval as well as signature by, uh, C-Cor LLC. Um, additionally, should that move forward and you all do expend funds, um, I know that the opioid abatement authority has approved and the county administrator can back me up on this as he's had more back and forth with the opioid abatement authority. But, um, they've tentatively approved a one point nine million dollar grant to this entity for the purposes of treatment, which would be, I think, much needed in the area. Um, and so, only thing outstanding for us to do is have this agreement executed and then also execute an MOU with the entity, C-Cor LLC, before they can begin operations and receive the one point nine million from the opioid abatement authority. And that, unless the county administrator has anything additional that would, uh, complete the section on C-Cor.
No, I do not, that completes the process.
So what we need now is a motion to accept that contract.
The motion will be to, you got two that's on here. First will be the OAA, the, uh, uh, authority grant of one point nine million. It's restricted only to capital cost as it states in, in the letter, and that's what the agreements will have. What that means is that would just go towards the outbuild of it, repair of it, to get the facility under a con, for operations. And then the second one is the OAA, uh, grant that's within Russell County. That's, that's dedicated for the OAA recovery program. That's the agreement that Mr. Wampler had put in place that for no misdemeanor, no felony sex offenders, so.
We, we need to do these separately.
We do these separate, yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Wampler if I can. Um, Mr. Wampler, who is going to, um, I guess, police that or look at that, you know? It's one thing to have it in a contract, it's another, like, who's going to be responsible for double checking? How do they double check? Because from what I understand, these are kind of, um, it's not quite HIPAA, it may be HIPAA, I don't know, but there's a certain level of privacy because they are still under DOC care. Or DOC, I don't know if you call it care, but, um, they're under that and it's not like you can just call and say, is Joe Smith there, you know? Um, so how, how do we police that and how, how will that help us?
That's a good question. Um, you'll see in section two point two of the contract, it requires C-Cor to ensure that any local, regional, state, and federal partners are aware of the prohibitions in the contract. And so if they failed to provide that and took, uh, took those who are coming into rehab without providing this to them, then they could be subject to additional breach under this contract. Um, as far as a regulatory entity by the county, we don't have an oversight committee for, set up for this type of thing at this point. And so we don't have a independent committee that would be looking out for it. Um, but in the, in the realm of trying to protect you all the best I can via the, the board's, um, I guess, speech at the, or statements at the last meeting, um, we also put that this, this agreement is to be assigned to any future owners. So if C-Cor was to terminate them, their entity and sell this business or sell this to another person, that this would be assigned to, to that purchaser. And it's required to be put into any contract that they have moving forward, uh, with any future purchaser or new owner so that all of these obligations would continue to that entity or that individual to make sure that that's not a way out of this contract as well.
So that would, um, if he gets federal contracts, that would extend to that as well? Or is this just DOC like with Virginia?
Um, the provision in section two point two would, would go to all state and federal partners, um, relating to DOC or any correctional facility, however the, the conveyance or transferability kind of issue where they could transfer this business to someone else and then this contract would be nothing, that is in there as well. That's, and it has to be assigned as a part of any contract that they have to sell or convey any of their membership interests in the LLC.
Nate, are you through, Tara?
Okay, I have a question. Uh, there is no application for the Russell County money. And it comes from the state pot of money, and one of their requirements is an application. And it's a very straightforward application. Do you not have one? Did we not get one? I mean, that, it is mandatory that we do, and all previous recipients of money have presented us with an application.
On the previous applications that was given during the previous board meetings when C-Cor first came available. So I will get an updated application from the OAA Authority itself that C-Cor had put in for the one point nine million. So that way I can get the state to be able to do it. We do have our own application, and at the time, C-Cor had, uh, put in a application that was based off of pro forma figures that were, you know, estimates, that's what pro forma. So they were doing it on estimates and I'll get a definitive update, uh, financial, uh, application from them upon the board's approval.
Sure.
Well, the application is very straightforward, who you're going to serve, uh, what they're going to do, where they'll be housed, uh, and a monthly, uh, requirement of all purchase orders and contract services. You have to turn that into the state, you have to have a CPA follow it, and, um, I'm just worried that it's not there. We haven't seen one.
Okay. Uh, what is the, um, I'm talking about treatment, what is the treatment, um, planned for people with issues with opioid addiction? By C-Cor?
Yeah, because I, I'd like to know that too, uh, because, you know, this money is specifically for Russell County and opioid stuff, so.
Uh, I'm Brian Blanton, I'm partner with Rota from all CPAs. Uh, so I'll address the first question, which was the CPA following the information. I worked on the pro forma, putting the information together. Uh, we do a lot of governments for, uh, audits of governments, nonprofits, and so forth. So I've worked in this realm for over thirty years. So when we put the pro forma together to get the information, we will be tracking each pot of money as it comes in. So we will be able to designate what the Russell County money is versus any other locality, and we'll track those. So we'll have that information available. So if you, as a county administrator, need a report on how those funds were spent, and we have to, uh, report that anyway under the capital improvements. So from the record-keeping and the financials, we'll have everything spelled out exactly as we have received the money and what part of the capital expenditures we did. And we have no problem sharing those if needed for each part of the money. As far as the programs and so forth, uh, I'll let Doug or Jessica speak to that.
I'm Jessica Smith, co-owner. Um, back to talking about who would police the sex offenders. Um, first, I would want everyone to know, there's a town ordinance, obviously, that you cannot house sex offenders there due to the ordinance. Secondly, the DOC, it is an entirely different contract for sex offenders, and we do not have a contract for sex offenders. So we do not have that with the Department of Corrections, so I just want to make sure people are aware that is a whole different contract you have to have with them, and we do not have that contract.
And have no intentions?
No intentions of that, no.
And then Doug, the program?
Yeah, the program, we've got our own, uh, counselors at, at the facility as well as Cumberland Mountain that, uh, that's going to partner with us for all treatments.
I have a, another couple of questions, Doug. Have you been following the state procurement regulations on bids and contracts on any work that's been done? You've done bids, you've advertised them, and you follow that procedure?
We have not, we have not advertised. Uh, this has been something that we've been doing ourselves.
And your job, and your job descriptions, you haven't done that, you've done all the hiring on your own. After you get your money, your one point nine million, will you have to go back and hire based on job descriptions and the federal laws that you're going to have to follow?
Well, the one, one point nine is all capital, so that's not for operations, so that there won't be any...
So you're, right now, you're going to take, you've already done everything on your own, all costs is your own. Are you going to reimburse yourself with this money, that one point nine?
Some of the grants are specific, it depends on whether they have reimbursements. Some of the direct funds are eligible for that, some are not, but they will still be tracked as capital improvements. So even if it's a reimbursement, the original transaction and the underlying expenses will still be identifiable. So they won't be lost simply in the reimbursement. But no, under the capital improvements, there's no requirement that those have to be bid or anything in, in this process.
And just to follow on the other side of the equation, as encumbered or restricted funds, let's talk our language. He, um, I've got to keep the other side of the equation on to make sure those encumbered funds are matching within the program backed up by source documents.
Yes, any, any encumbrances, you know, we, we track those and we, we will have that information.
And those are reported not only to our independent auditor, but it's also reported to the APA and the OAA and to the court system.
Yeah, because the APA does their annual report, and you have your guidelines that you have to follow. And that's why we're going to track each individual pot separately in, in the process.
Yeah.
One of my concerns is that, uh, in a separate, aside from the one point nine million, because that was recommended by the OAA, is that right?
Yes, sir.
The one, uh, hundred thousand dollars that we're considering is money from the OAA to specifically Russell County for opioid treatment and prevention in Russell County. My biggest holdback here is that this facility is not specifically for that and will not serve Russell County citizens as a, as a whole. And talking with, with people from the previous C-Cor and people, uh, associated with DOC, these, this facility, and you correct me if I'm wrong, will receive inmates from all across Virginia and not specific to any drug-related charges or anything else. It's just pick of them, pick of the litter, I guess. And so that's my concern is, we've been charged with making sure this money goes to treatment and prevention in Russell County to help Russell County. And it seems like we're going to be using this money to help all of Virginia, uh, with all of their criminals, not necessarily specifically for OAA.
Well, one of the issues is the huge impact that the opioids has had on the, uh, police forces of, of the localities. And with the other localities that have put forth their opioid money in this, it's an effort to look at saving on both the police force and those dollars. Because understand, if they end up in the local jail or regional jail, if, and through this process, then that's taking taxpayer dollars, local taxpayer dollars to do this. With the DOC, the DOC pays those fees for those individuals. Also, this is part of wanting to be part of the solution, not the problem. So the opioids and the reason that these settlements continue to happen is because of recognition of what these opioid problems have been to the small communities. Wise County, Lee County, Scott County, Dickinson County, Russell County, all of them. So the purpose in this local match money is for when those opioid individuals come through, you're training them to do budgeting, to get back into this, back into the community, work inside the community, and become productive citizens. So this, these funds are designed to be part of the solution. The problem already occurred when these opioid monies, opioids entered into our localities. We've all experienced that. I, I dare say, everybody on this board has had, I've had tons of clients that have had children that have come to rehab and so forth. So this is a major problem. With this money and the reason it was passed through to these localities is so that we can be part of that solution and try to put the money back in. Hopefully, it'll be a reduction on the police force, which, which they are overworked, and as we all know. So we're trying to take these funds, educate these individuals. Yes, there may be a few, but we have the ability to track and we'll know who those are. So how many will be from Russell County? We don't know. Uh, we know that every county that we're dealing with has residents that are either released or come back into the program who have been citizens. So yes, it's impossible to predict, but it's all part of the solution overall for our whole region, not just one, one county as, as an individual.
And, and, and just to tag on to what you just said, a lot of the other surrounding counties as a region has contributed to this. Uh, Wise County, Scott County just called me Wednesday, Tassel County, Buchanan County, Dixon County. There, it's, it's just like, it's a regional partnership. So, uh, as y'all can attest, I mean, uh...
I mean, I understand that, but I'm, I'm like Nate, I, you know, the opioid money, I kind of look at it as blood money almost because we have all had experiences with family members passing, um, friends, whatnot. We've seen this impact, I mean, we were targeted, that's the reason we have this money. And I believe that it is our responsibility to make sure that the Russell County money goes to help Russell County. goes to help Russell County citizens. That is my concern, I know, I know it's probably everybody's concern up here, um, and, and the fact that, you know, and I think the program's gonna be good, now don't get me wrong, and you've, you've already qualified for many, I think it's wonderful, um, but my concern is, is what with our money, I'd like to see more of a prevention type thing, I'd like to see it specific to our citizens. That's, that's just my concern.
Terry, you're gonna have to address that, but different prevention is not a part of this treatment, is what they're talking about.
And we are helping get people back in the workforce here, and as we all know, everyone's hiring, they need workers, and there's ways that we are gonna contribute back to Russell County.
Having had some previous experience with C-COR when it was operational before, I wager ninety-nine point nine percent of the people coming through there have had not only problems with law, but it's, it's, it's brought on by drug-related issues, so. I haven't met any of them, and I employ a lot of them, you know, doing work that has not had a issue with drugs.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion that we, uh, approve the OAA, uh, cooperative partnership for, uh, one point nine million dollars.
I have a motion, Dave.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this issue? If not, I'll in favor of this motion, seeing if I've seen I, I, I'll oppose, like sign. Okay. Now we need to address the hundred thousand dollars in Russell County money. I understand that the application will need to be updated, is that correct, Lorna?
And I can get that from you.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to go ahead and approve that.
Pending submittal of the application.
Yeah, pending submittal of the application.
The update of the application.
Yep.
I'll give you a second for discussion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, now we're up in discussion.
I think Ms. Di had those issues.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a very straightforward, simple application, and I just, I, I need to see it and read it and digest it, and you know me, the schoolteacher in me, I'm gonna have that red ink pen and my highlighter, and I just, there's no application in front of me, I can't, I can't make a judgment on it.
Also, Mr. Chair, um, I'm gonna ask, the county administrator advised us just a minute ago that, uh, money from other counties have been, uh, dedicated, so to speak? So, um, I may have read that, but could you refresh me on that one, um?
Yes.
Uh, Scott County gave?
I let them speak, 'cause they, they're working in partnerships with, with the courts and, and the other, other counties.
Scott County's, uh, agreed to partner with us, um, Wise County, Lee County, we've got another meeting with, and Tazle County has agreed, but we've got one more meeting with them as well. And Buchanan County, we'll have the first meeting with them.
Could I get amounts, do, can you divulge amounts to us?
Sure, Scott, Scott County was seventy-five thousand, Wise County was two hundred thousand.
Scott, two hundred thousand.
Two hundred, two hundred thousand from, from Wise, seventy-five from Scott?
Yeah, and then what's on the table for?
Seventy-five, I think, for Tazle, but we're meeting with their OAA committee, and then it's the same, Buchanan County, we've gotta meet with them, not quite sure on the amount yet, but when we met with their head person of their committee, he felt it would be very similar of what the other requests were.
I see.
Thank you for clarification, thank you.
Any further discussion?
One more thing, uh, I've talked to Senator Pillion about this, uh, this has been endorsed by Senator Pillion and their committee. Uh, I know we've had this issue, uh, if anybody else, you know, has any particular plans or, uh, things that we could do to help these people. I have family members that don't live in Russell County, but we're facing the same issues they live in, in, you know, uh, in, uh, Mount Rogers District. My hope would be, and, and my, actually, my sister-in-law is married to the executive director of the Marion Hospital, he runs the facility. I serve on the Cumberland Mountain Community Service Board. There's a widespread problem, and my prayer would be that we could help somebody.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, if you save one person, you know, I look at it as, as that, I mean, you know, I wanna take care of a Russell County citizen because of the issues, but I'd like to break that cycle, and I'd like to have a, a facility that would help people get back into the workforce. We, when we first got elected, uh, we, we took over some facilities to try to curb the debt and fix the facility, and I had a couple of ladies come to me, because they had felony charges, they couldn't, one lady couldn't get her child back, and she wanted a job, and it's hard for those people to get a job, it's hard for them to get back into the system, and, and, uh, we, we, as a board, we helped a couple of these people get work at the waste sites, and, and it didn't matter what they could do, they just wanted to change their life. She ended up getting her child back, and she called me once a week to check in, to let me know how good she was doing, and that she was gonna beat this thing. And I'm telling you, it's the mental illness, and I'll tell you, uh, we seen it when I served on the town council with Honeaker, we would have, we wouldn't have any police protection because our police officers was doing transport services. They were going all the way out to Richmond and all the way out to Chesterfield and taking a patient when we should've had them here in our county, you know, uh, doing the services and the jobs, so. I understand that, but if we could save one life, no matter who that life is, I believe we're doing a great service to save that life, and I appreciate what you all are doing, I know it's a huge endeavor, but if this is endorsed, you know, by other counties and other people, they see the need as great as we see the need, and I have talked to Doug, I know you all are Russell County people, and any Russell County person that gets put in a regional jail, if there's a bed available, you're gonna take those Russell County people, I know you are.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, I know you can't commit to a lot of that stuff under the contractual agreements, but I know you're gonna help, help our citizens, I do know that, I feel like you will.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Chair, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that, um, uh, the, the agreement says, uh, certain restrictions and certain things you can do, but it also says here that, uh, in its effort to rehabilitate individuals at this facility, only upon reasonable security and assurance in this contract, that the covenants herein will be strictly followed. So the covenants, I know are in this, but that, the hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about today from the Russell County money, that goes to just strictly rehabilitate, um, those folks who are coming there, does that take care of salaries? It doesn't take care of paving your driveway or fixing your?
That's what the capital improvement is.
The one point nine that we've, we've given you, yes.
The one point nine is to cover all the capital facilities and so forth.
Okay, so, is that, do you, can you have a, a roundabout something that you're gonna do with this that just goes strictly to take care of the folks that come?
Well, to, to run the facility, th- there'll be approximately twenty employees when, when it is fully occupied, and those will be good paying positions. We, we have made sure, and, and in our forecast, we had the information that spelled out those. There are other things that come into play as far as, uh, making sure that you have to have the drivers for these vans for a lot of the different things that are there, so the capital part, as we fill in those pieces, then we will know better what we will be able to do with the other funds. There will be some items that will come up that are unanticipated at this point. If you would like, you know, we are going to track the money separately, so we will have the ability, if we need to, to show exactly where we spent the hundred thousand dollars that came from Russell County. And, you know, again, in the operation of a facility, the fact that we're not gonna have to use any of these funds for capital improvements in any way gives us the ability to run the facility to the highest level. We wanna make sure if there's any Russell County citizens that come in, we're able to take care of them. I think we will see the programs as far as what we're able to offer them on the rehab side expand, you know, the budgeting, teaching them how to function, I mean, you'd be amazed at what some lack of skill sets some of these individuals possess. So as we say, we've got to turn them back into the community, and, and we wanna turn them back in as, as taxpayers and good citizens and, and stewards of our community and what we represent. So those programs will continue to evolve as we, we do this. Right now, we don't know every need, we just know what our pro formas show, what we anticipate the expense to be, and we'll be glad to come back and update after we operate and we have a better feel for how things have settled in. But as in most cases, your, your initial forecast is gonna be tweaked some because there's gonna be things come up that we're not aware of right now. We've tried to do it to the best that we can, but there will always be some unknowns.
Right. I guess one of the basis of your program is that you do, that the people there are available, and you help them try to find employment while they're there.
Absolutely, and we transport them to and from work, uh, we provide that, and then it's not just finding work for them so that when they get out, they have that established, but we also plan to help with housing, helping if someone needs a purchase of a vehicle, getting things to hopefully that they're not back on the streets and back in the system, I guess.
And you provide meals, I mean, there's, there's staff to have.
You all don't do the rehab, correct? You, you go to like Cumberland Mountain or something like that?
Yeah, they're gonna be going to Cumberland Mountain, but we're gonna also have our counselors at our facility as well.
So you will be hiring counselors, so, are, like, so tell me about that, are you gonna require them like, I don't know, once or twice a week, yeah, just ballpark?
It, it's so many hours, uh, regulated by the DOC, yeah.
How much a day are you charging, uh, DOC for the, I guess, the payers?
Our, our contract's for eighty-seven dollars a day.
Eighty-seven dollars for each person that's there?
Yeah.
What's that eighty-seven dollars cover?
Covers room and board.
And food.
Food, transportation. All operations, I mean, it's, the whole, the whole forecast is based upon the DOC gives you those figures, and then you have to try to figure, figure out how to operate it under those costs. Payroll, benefits for the employees. And that sounds like a lot, but it's not.
Eighty-seven.
It, it's not, that.
I just told David, I don't think I can leave a rate, he said, no.
Well, and, and that's why these forecasts, I mean, they were worked, reworked, reworked, so every dollar that we can get, as I said, to try to expand these programs, we want it to be a success, and we want it to work the best, so every dollar makes a difference.
Now, you all said that you're gonna take fifty, correct?
We have a contract for fifty.
Through the street.
We can house eighty.
Okay, so, and, and you're gonna?
Saying that, we have, I'm sorry.
You're gonna get all fifty jobs and that sort of thing, do we have enough for that around here?
Well, we're gonna be transporting some to Washington County, uh, maybe even, uh, uh, you know, Tazle, uh, but maybe even Wise County, but that's gonna, you know, be the limit of it, I guess.
So, are, you are a for-profit or you are a nonprofit?
Yeah, that was asked before, yes, we are for-profit, yeah. So the real estate will all be taxed and paid in Russell County in, in the whole process?
Now, back, back to the OAA grant, um, under our restrictions, Russell County, because of our two, our male and female recovery houses, we carry in the state under the OAA the gold standard. Russell County is the gold standard in southwest Virginia, and that's why the legislators looked at us, and the other counties are giving seventy-five, two hundred thousand, it's not just 'cause of the, you know, they know that we're the gold standard.
And we carry that, that seal, so when these availables that come up, that's why it was located here in conjunction with the courts, the DOC, and the networks that are between southwest Virginia counties.
Yeah, this is a regional facility.
As it says, we're the heart of southwest Virginia.
This is a regional facility that just happens to be located in Russell, Russell County.
I, I have another question too about the jobs, you know, and, and you, your ninety-day program, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, once they complete the ninety days, do they stay here? Is that how that works? Are they gonna be Russell County citizens, or are they?
They, they can, they can be, uh, or they can actually go back to their locality, but it's all, that's gonna be up to probation and parole and the judge.
So a lot of that's gonna depend upon their finances and if they're on probation and whatever, right? Because some people probably will be on probation after your program, but, okay.
Will the Purdue Pharma settlement a few days ago affect the?
Uh, this, listen, the, the board is here to ask questions, okay? Do you have any more questions from the board, any more discussion?
The regional facility comment, this is not a regional facility, this is a state facility. This is gonna take people from Hampton, from Alexandria, from Richmond, from Tazle County.
Yeah, I call that a regional facility, that, it handles the whole southwest region, you know?
On the east coast, they have a couple of facilities up there, there's one in Roanoke, there's one, I'm wanting to say in Richmond, but they're, they're dotted over, up that way a little bit, this, we don't have a facility, um, west of Roanoke.
But if they, if they only have a couple up there and they do have more population, therefore more inmates, then it makes, like, you know, just by numbers, they're gonna be sending us more than we'll be able to see, or we'll be sending you more than probably the southwest jail will, wouldn't you guess?
Every now and then, we're gonna get somebody from on the east coast, I'm sure.
I mean, I'd, I'd say probably more than ever now and then, I, I mean, I know as a teenager, when I worked, I, I ended up working with some individuals from, and I don't know if it was C-COR or whatever, but they were not from here, and they had a lot of people there that were housed that were not from, from here, not even southwest Virginia, like out east.
To, to piggyback off Tara there, that, that's been my experience in knowing people who have hired these people in the past when C-COR was running, the majority of the people that come in were from the east coast. I've found that not true, 'cause I've hired tons of them to do that. They've located around, I found, had some from Hayside, some from over in Smith County and Washington County, that was under the old C-COR.
That also depended on the previous owner, whether they were gonna accept people from the regional jails and the local judges, that, and we have met with Buchanan County, Commonwealth attorneys, they're all in favor of C-COR, they all wanna utilize it, use it, help the regional jail cost, so I understand what you're saying, and maybe that was your perception of it, but that, I don't know how much they offered that to the regional.
So what is your ability to, to select, or is it just whoever comes? Is it just whoever DOC sends, or do you select?
We can say yes or no. We can say, we can turn them away.
So how's that work, what's that look like? Does that, uh, is that a list, you get a referral list and it says, these are the people who need a place, and you pick who you want?
Uh, and it'll, it'll be with the prob, probation and parole, that we're gonna work with, the local probation and parole.
Any further questions? We ready for a vote? 'Cause I understand the motion, David, or you made, David made the motion, oh, in the loose end, okay, is to award the one hundred thousand dollars pending submittal of an acceptable and approved application, am I correct?
Uh, updated, uh, application with, with current estimates, financials.
Okay, so that is the motion. Rebecca's gonna review. You said approved, so we have to approve that application before, before we move forward after this?
Would that not be better to table till we see the application in?
I think we're in, so we're in vote mode now.
Well, could we do, I mean, we're subsidiary?
We're in vote mode now. Well, you still make a subsidiary motion during, uh, consideration. Quiet, let's hold it down in the audience, please. Let's call the vote. Let's call for the vote. All in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand.
I will abstain until I see the application in front of me.
I'm an extension.
So fail three to two, so you need to get the application into us ASAP, okay?
We'll have that to you in a minute.
Thank you. Randy, if you write, write? Who said that? Chad, you, you know where the door is now, you, this is for the board, it's not for the audience, okay? I don't care, if you interrupt the board, I will have you thrown out, okay? Okay, listen, we're gonna get on with the rest of the business, this is the board's business. Community had the opportunity to speak, and they didn't, okay? I'm sorry for this disruption, I'm sorry for this interruption. Randy had the opportunity to come up here and speak, and you didn't, so. I'm sorry, Randy. Okay, I'm sorry for the disruption. Okay, I'm sorry for the disruption.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that complete all your proposals, Will?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, it does, and just as an informational item, um, I think there's, uh, three separate pots of allocations for the opioid abatement authority coming to Russell County, it's fourteen million, fifteen million, and fourteen million dollars from various, um, manufacturers of opioids, and so, um, with this one hundred thousand dollar allocation that you all are considering, it would be a small portion of your total allocation towards other efforts mentioned by the board, uh, prevention, other rehabilitation, other treatment, you'll have you'll have additional funds, I think, left over.
So you said fourteen million, fifteen million?
Uh, let me pull it here.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman and to Supervisor Kaiser, Russell County has in their first allocation fourteen point four million, their second allocation fifteen point one five million, and in the third Jansen payment, um, that one is fourteen point four million.
Is this?
Okay.
Is that, how does that, is that all, so all that money comes to Russell, that's Russell County money?
That's correct.
Can you give us a total?
Listen, please, time for public comments, so we have to get on with this business. We've already resolved this issue, Mr. Lester.
Who does that specifically come from?
My, Mr. Mr. Chair and to Mr. Kaiser, I think the opioid abatement authority is who the settlement is with, the opioid abatement authority is who the manufacturers pay as a part of their court ordered settlements, then the opioid abatement authority allocates a certain percentage of funding to each locality in Virginia, and those numbers that I just read off are from the twenty, April twenty twenty-three report of the opioid abatement authority, if there is any impact from other manufacturers that are not listed in those three buckets, it hasn't been published by the opioid abatement authority yet, and so I would say that's a reasonable grounds to know what your total amount long-term is for these allocations, um, and so that was my only point in raising that, in that this one hundred thousand dollars is not your only opportunity to address opioid abatement and the societal harms that it causes.
So does that money come to us in this certain spurt, or Mr. Lester, how's that?
Go ahead.
As as y'all have seen during the previous couple of board meetings, y'all have appropriated O A A funds, so there's three pots of money, and there's the O A A state, then there is the one that's regional, that's partnership, yes, and then there's the ones that come directly to Russell County. Now, those O A A funds ordered by the courts, cuz Russell County during our first beginning, we got on the, we jumped across before the state did and sued the companies, we had our own regional ones and partnerships under the Chaffin Law Firm, and with Pillion and the rest, we went after the op- opiate companies at the beginning, so we reaped the benefits of that, so we've got our own allocations, so we can work like we did with this Secor, they can go after the state money, which is not our money, they can go after regional money as a regional pot, and then we can set back and allocate to the prevention and treatment and recovery programs that we want. Right now, the only ones that we have allocated out to was for programs like prevention on Narcan, we have got two recovery houses that house only Russell County males and females, which are, like I said, are carrying the gold standards, so we are good at this, so as, we ain't carrying the gold standard for no reason, so we work with the other mental health cares, we work with the courts, we work with the judges, and the system is in place and it's working really well, we got many of these employees that we've got in these programs, you will see them in our facilities, that's why we have four maintenance personnel in the county only that handles four hundred seventy-seven miles, and the rest are done within these programs, so we are very good at it, and again, it carries the gold standard, so.
But as far as when the money is received, it it comes in in pots, it's from several different.
We do, right now, our local share that we get appropriations based off the quarters, they come in at different times and and as y'all will know, you have to pre-approve anything that we put into restricted funds or any funds at all. Second thing, I'm set, we have about six hundred thousand dollars that we have, we're that's currently in our general fund, it's appropriated and restricted by O A A and for covering prevention, treatment and recovery, so that that's what we're done for, only ones that we've ever allocated to is our two recovery houses, we are very protective and that's why we're carrying the gold seal, so. I hope I answered that, didn't go, that's a long way around the block, but it's it's part of the program.
So is that is that money in, being held, that forty-three point nine million Mr. Wallace referred to as a total, has that been held by the O A A for Russell County, or how does that work?
The O A A had their own litigation from the state that it depends upon, all of it comes through the O A A, whether it's direct or indirect payments or regional, so at, the O A A appropriates based off of what they get in, we've got our own case that has to come through that we appropriated on our counties, so it'll come in at different amounts and different times and different allocations based off the number of suits. Did I miss anything?
And just to, just to support that a little further, McKesson Cardinal Health and Amerisource Bergen are the three, uh, distrib- distribution, excuse me, distributors of opioids that contributed to the O A A settlement, um, fifty-five percent of their monies go to the O A A, the authority itself, fifteen percent to the Commonwealth of Virginia, so the state got a settlement share of the money, and then thirty percent directly to the cities and counties of the state, and so that's that's where the, that's how that was allocated. The total amount of the settlement was, uh, nationwide, twenty-one billion dollars, so, the the total amount of the opioid abatement settlement, um, is twenty-one billion split up amongst fifty states and Russell County shares, uh, and three distributions, fourteen million, fifteen million, another fourteen million.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I don't wanna keep us here all day, but, um, for the purpose of understanding more, um, Mr. Lester, perhaps you need to put that contract and all that information into a folder that everybody can get to on what happened with that money and when it came down, and what we can and cannot do with it, and the three different pots and how it's directed.
Yeah, with the new board members, I agree, we'll we'll drop that down, cuz that took us years to get in place, and a lot of litigation, a lot of litigation, back and forth, and that way you can have the parameters of the programs and see how it's divided out, so I will include what I've got from the O A A and the guidance on it, and Will can bring in the contractual and the litigation, how's that?
Okay, Mr. Lester.
Yes, ma'am.
County administrator reports and requests.
Mine's easy now, mine is, first one on the county administrator reports and request is the road reporting system, as as well as you can see, uh, those are the ones that, uh, we have reported back into B dot is issues, uh, take a look at that, second report is, uh, the, I was waiting on B dot for the road report system and I'll send it out to you separately, that's, uh, right now, we're just doing paving and the routes, I'll get that to you. The one that's came up on the report is, it started off, as everyone knows, we're going through not much rainfall right now, and I mean, it's it's getting bad, so the D E Q drought watch advisory declaration, this is the one that came through the state for, you know, conserving water, plus also for the region and for the fires that are occurring right now, and everybody knows that, you know, that's, it's, it doesn't take much one to ignite, over the last couple of weekends, we've had, last weekend, we had three brush fires, uh, we've had a couple this week that we've been able and lucky to contain no fatalities, no much, no property damage, but we do need to can, you know, look at this, um, take a look at that, as as far as the drought, as the watch, as we continue, they're supposed to be over the next ten days, cuz Moorestown reports to us and and the rest of the nation's, you know, uh, watch advisories, the Department of the State and the feds, so as you can conserve water as much as you can, cuz this looks like this is going to go way into the September, October, and I'm pretty sure the farmers already know this, are aware of it, Jim shaking his head, yes, so this is not a couple of weeks long, this is gonna go, uh, El Nino, and, uh, we'll we'll progress as as the summer goes on. Next on the county administrator reports is, uh, as Mr. Hensley had talked about last week, and the reason I hadn't posted the Russell County audit and the APA audit is they just got done on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and we'd had other things on the agenda like the landfill, so, I didn't wanna get it intermingled, so, so here I have, uh, so we have got the independent report from, uh, as of May the seventh, two thousand twenty-four, which is one hundred sixty-seven pages, the auditor's report, uh, as of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, both of them are up on the site, so, uh, take a look at those if you if you want to, next is the, we talked about the drought, is the Russell County wide burn ban consideration, so this is what we have in place to be able to restrict burn bans, that's, uh, in addition to what the state forestry and the state has in place, so I only put this on the agenda for consideration because we didn't know what the weather was going to do, but as we look again at the forecast, uh, it doesn't look good in this region through September, October, as far as water totals and accumulation and forecast, so as emergency management director for the county, if the board does not feel comfortable right now implementing burn ban, cuz it does affect certain operations and farmers, and, you know, we we're very much aware of this, we do this, you know, over the years, so as emergency manager of director, if upon the, uh, if we don't get any accumulation, we don't get any enough rainfall, y'all can, uh, actually give me the directive to implement and I'll put it back upon the board, but you can do it since you've already seen it, and this is the enacting date of that what we do, just I'll pull the board and enact a burn ban, so you have an alternative, you can either do it today or wait and give me authority later.
I'll make a motion to give our county administrator the authority to issue this based on certain conditions, uh, as it continues to get dry, we've had a couple of major fires, one in my district, uh, I was pretty concerned about, and thankfully, our forestry division and our local fire departments was able to, uh, take that out, we've had, and it was based on a, uh, power line, uh, falling in drill in the drill community that caught the woods on fire, so I wanna thank our first responders for taking that direct action, being able to get that out, cuz that could've spread pretty quickly, but that's my motion.
Motion to end a second. Any discussion on this matter?
Um, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, I I don't disagree with that because we have seen some major things happen, particularly over in District One, when it was dry and it burned up the whole courthouse estates, uh, area over there, but anyway, um, remind me, does the, um, fire departments, are are they in agreement with this, have they, have they been approached and they're saying that this is something that we need to see right now?
I have talked to the fire departments and they are very concerned about it right now, have I contacted all of them? No, uh, but I'll, I'll, I can, I'll, I didn't think they would need to, cuz my biggest measurement and monitor is the farmers, they, between the rest and what they need to do, and in conjunction with the fire departments, cuz the fire department gets it when it's already started, it's already too late, so my, the farmers are are the biggest gauge, so they'll say, this is what we got coming up, this is how dry we're seeing it, this is what we cannot do, so, uh, Andrew could probably speak better on this than any of us, so, uh, but for right now, I use a combination of multiple measurements, so.
Then I have nothing else, thank you.
Anybody else have any comment or question?
Can we, can we put this to a, uh, residential restriction immediately and leave agricultural as an optional where you can enact that later if needed?
As the governing board, yes, you can, you can restrict it residential only.
And then they may give you the option to go.
Yes, sir.
Further as needed, cuz I don't wanna put restrictions on farming activities, they're, most farmers are pretty responsible as far as making sure they take control of what they've got, but, you know, things can get out of hand, and we've seen a terrible drought, but, uh, residential, I think, you know, as far as burning leaves in your yard, that could probably wait for the time being.
Then, since we've already had a motion as second, I think you'd have to submit that as a secondary motion.
Subsidiary motion to, to immediately do residential ban and leave it up to the, uh, administrator, the director of emergency management to, um, enact further on agriculture and industrial fire.
Well, based off that motion, I will, I will amend the resolution to, for those for residential, and, uh, I'll put in the one for agriculture as as based off of emergency in need.
I'll give Mr. Kaiser a second on that one.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor of this substitute motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, there aren't none.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaiser, thank you, Mr. Ewing. Uh, next on the county administrator reports is, uh, again, we talked about retail and business, and that's, that's good to help our county grow, so here, on the next one on the county administrator reports is, this is the Tobacco Regional Opportunity Fund approval for the performance agreement for, between the Russell County I D A and the Siemens Equipment Company, on behalf of the Tobacco Commission, the Russell County I D A for request for grant loan, the tobacco fund in amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars to assist the Siemens Equipment growth in Russell County. Half of this award is available in advance as a zero interest loan, and while the other half is to be distributed as a grant after an agreed performance metrics have been achieved, this approval is based on your request of April the third, twenty-four, indicating that Siemens Equipment will create seventy-five new jobs with an annual salary of fifty-five, six seventy-seven, and invest seven million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in Russell County, so I need an approval to accept the Tobacco Regional Opportunity Fund and the performance agreement.
So moved. A motion to have a second?
A second.
Motion then a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, clawbacks. Does the, does the Tobacco Commission take care of their own in this?
Yes, ma'am.
I just.
Tobacco has no, I think it is, throughout the last, since the North of Grumman, which we were very successful in, but we had to litigate on our own, this board did, uh, every I D A contract's gonna have clawbacks, and I can't speak no more of that, but the attorney can.
Mr. Chair and Supervisor Wallace, uh, Tobacco Commission has extensive grant making experience, and their, their clawbacks would be outside of what the board can do relative to this application, I understand, they do have clawbacks and they do have performance that, very nature of this is to make sure that they're following their performance agreement with the state entity, well, Tobacco Commission's its own, own entity, but with tobacco.
Okay, so the I D A is doing their due diligence.
The I D A has done their diligence with this prospect, and, um, believe an announcement from the governor's office is coming out soon on on Simmons, uh, but I think that's a very positive thing for the county, we had a, had a company that left the, uh, building that now Simmons is inhabiting, and, um, glad to have an employer there now working to hire additional people, continuing to expand in the county, it's a good thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Okay, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, there aren't none.
Thank you, Chairman. Next on the county administrator request is the Department of Criminal Justice Services for the School Resource Officer Grants, these are still coming in, on grant number twenty-five dash two ninety C for two hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars, and twenty-five, uh, five fifteen A for one hundred sixty-three, one fifty-two, I need approval for, uh, appropriation.
So moved. So move. Have a motion, Mr. Eaton, second, Miss Duff. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and there aren't any.
Next on the county administrator request is a Russell County Resolution Support for the VDOT Smart Scale Route nineteen eighty project. And this is a project that I have been working with the Department of Transportation into the Route nineteen eighty area. At, and just to put it up on the map, this is the, where the Route nineteen turns down in Route eighty in the Rosedale area, there has been multiple incidents, especially T-boning during that area and that intersection, as everyone knows that lives in that area, that's a very dangerous. Even though we have, as you can see, there is a side distance there that it depends on what kind of vehicle you set in lower you set or into a truck, but the side distance is limited. And the, this is the new design by VDOT that they are approving to do restructure this order, intersection. As you can see, we are going to be encroaching into the medium to make that more of a, of an accessible side distance that we can see on both north and south on Route nineteen. And as you can see, as you come off of Route eighty, we're trying to get an on-ramp that will give the opportunities, that way you, you don't, everyone knows it comes out of Honaker, they shoot across or they shoot out, and, and this is one of the issues. But VDOT has already plumbary put this on as a safety project because of the number of incidents based off this design. So I need an approval for resolution support for the VDOT Smart Scale Route nineteen, Route eighty project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, open for discussion. Mr. Leston, they're going to continue with two lanes, aren't they, on either side?
Yeah, as you can see, yeah, yeah, you can see the two lanes. We're going to separate them out and go into the medium, yes.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that congratulations to VDOT, I think that looks outstanding and it makes perfect sense to me. Very good.
I've worked in Tassau quite a bit and been traveling that way in mornings and evenings. And in the wintertime, the sun is right in your face. If I'm going north in the morning, it's right there. If I'm coming home in the evening, it's right there. And I have personally ran that light because I thought it was green. And when I got right to it, it was red. Was nothing coming, I kept coming. So if they can do something with that light until you can, I don't know how you would put a background on that until that sun isn't hindering you, but that's my only comment. Because I, I could have been one of those T-bones that you mentioned, or I could have hit somebody else.
And as everyone knows too, that travels Russell County a lot. We actually had two, the Route nineteen and eighty, but we also had the nineteen fifty eight intersection on our list too. During the analysis, we're trying to look at the same concept, but, and this will be on the future, we're still working on it. We got hindered when we were coming out from fifty eight, coming on the nineteen through the intersection, we were going to take the medium, but problem is, we're trying to figure out, because there's a division, subdivision up there, we was going to have to take the crossover out that people come in and out of as the on-ramp. So give us a little bit more time to work on that, so that's future news.
Okay.
Is there currently a flashing light there on each side to warn of light changing?
Yes, as you approach, you will see it actually kick on into a yellow status. Yes, and, and a lot of people don't understand that, they don't, it flashes when you're getting near red. It's timed, from that flashing light down to the red light, that thing is timed to time, it will go from green to red.
Yeah, there's one in Washington County at Big John's like that. If it's, if it starts flashing right before you get to it.
You're noticed off.
You're not going to make the light, so, yeah.
That's a good point.
Any further discussion?
I got, okay, where's the?
If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and there aren't any.
As, as mentioned at our last board meeting, I've got a request for the sale and the surplus and sale of the home and property on the fifty eight May Street in Lebanon, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors own. I will turn it over to the treasurer for surplus and sale. I need a motion for approval.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Does this sell with the tax properties, or will it be an individual sale, or how will the sale be conducted?
It will be, as far as none of this is into the treasurer's realm, because the board can sell itself. The treasurer will be selling, but if you, if you're having a tax sale, why not put it in while you have majority into the audience? So, you know, we'll, we'll try it, we're going to put a minimum bid on this thing to ensure that we get what it is actually not appraised at on county records, because everybody knows we're going through the reassessment, but the current market value.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, so.
Market value, yes. So I need approval.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and there aren't any.
Thank you, Chairman. Next on the county administrator reports is the Russell County Sheriff Department for Mutual Aid and Cooperation Agreement for the Law Enforcement Services. This is procedural with Washington County, Smith County, Buchanan County, Tassau County, Dix County, Scott County, and Wise County. Since we, Russell County touches seven counties, it's, it's, it's a mutual aid agreement for security services if we need them or they need us, so I need approval.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second to approve these mutual aid agreements. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and there aren't any.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is the, on the county administrator reports is the Russell County Planning Commission requests that the Board of Supervisors approve the survey that Ralph and Rhonda Hale, the four point four five oh acres to Jeff Gross, combining lots two through five in the subdivision of the old, old Honaker Road was acceptable based on the county subdivision ordinance. I need approval for that, for us, planning commission request.
Two plans for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the second plat is the planning commissioner requests that the board approve, has reviewed the proposed plat from Advantage LLC and Donald and Norma Sullivan, the new acreage, new acreage, Donald and Norma Sullivan, point six two seven acres, and Advantage LLC, new acreage, point nine zero zero acres. Boundary line adjustments on the US nineteen highway was acceptable based on the county ordinance. I need approval on both. So move.
Are we going to do them together or separately?
You can do them together.
I'll make my motion.
I'll say you're on it. It's done together.
Okay, fine, discussion. I noticed on one that there was two notes, it was on for Mr. Gross. How do we handle that the surveyor says there's a missed closure of two feet, two feet here? And the second note, there was a missed closure of nine feet? And then it says there's no title report furnished, so there was no, no attorney reviewed this? Do we go ahead? I mean, what's the ramifications? I don't want these folks to get in trouble and lose part of their property or gain something. How do we do that? Do we just let them, let their attorney handle it?
Terrorists, the planning commission addressed all that.
Yeah, Will, you were there when we, or Mr. Wampler, you were there when we went through all these, right?
I was. Which, which plat?
On the one that's for, for Mr. Gross.
Okay.
The one that we had questions about with that fee.
Right, well, I think it was determined at the planning commission that there would not be a conflict between the owner of the Leslie Kenneth Hale property there to the, let's see, to the north. There was not, there was not conflicting ownership of those two tracks, so unless someone wants to sue themselves over a boundary lines dispute, that probably unlikely.
She was asking specifically about the notes on there.
Right. It would be a private dispute at that point, it wouldn't be something.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, there are, there are, excuse me, there are plans that we have to review that vote on, but there's also just informational sharing things, can we get that separated out?
We can, ma'am, and Ms. Di had, and I had some discussion on this, and there's been a little turnover into the planning commission. So we'll get the ones that are exempt and non-exempt and, and the ones that were in through, and we'll talk to Philip and, and the rest, and we'll get all these straight. It's, it's more of a reporting issue to make sure y'all know what, what went through, what was exempted, what was approved, and what y'all's responsibility is.
Yes, and also, thank you, Mr. Wampler, for your report. So if the, the attorney's report can be included in that, so that at least we'll all know what's going on with that.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and there aren't any.
Thank you, Chairman. Last item on the county administrator reports and request is the Commissioner of Revenue Association moving travel request for Frida Sweeney and Crystal White, I need approval for.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a travel request, any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and there aren't any.
Chairman, that concludes county administrator reports and requests.
Okay. Board discussion and reminders. Mr. Hensley, have anything?
I don't have anything today, thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes, on our road request or our road report, we had a submission in there for Banner Street, GB Short Street. I think GB Short Street is just labeled for nine one one matters. I don't think it is, is it a public street?
It is not.
It's a private street?
That is correct.
Okay, so again, I'm asking.
We do look at those when it comes.
Are you sending back, when you get these, you're sending this back and saying, this is not germane to our topic here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, also Blackstone Lane, they said, they have a sign down, so that's up near the Sun Convenience Center in that neighborhood, so if you could see about that, having that fixed.
I got one sign crew that VDOT's got, that's, yeah.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
That goes through the whole region.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Tara?
Mr. Lester, I want to thank you for getting back with me on the stuff with Cleveland, you know, with the, gosh, what was it, the trash and that sort of thing?
Community center.
Yeah, and the picnic tables, hopefully we can get that taken care of, I had a few people.
That's a very neat idea.
Yeah, and so also, I, I had a question, you know, you turned over FOIA to the law firm, correct? And I had a few people ask me, is that going to affect our legal prices? You know, because obviously we're going to have to pay for that. And also, will that affect the price that the public would have to pay? Because I know that some FOIAs charge, I'm sorry, my voice is gone, y'all. And that, you know, some FOIAs we have to charge for depending on how large they are.
That is correct. Well, right now, in our FOIA, as you'll see on our website, you can, there's a FOIA form, and there's a FOIA fee schedule. Right now, and as you know, under the Code of Virginia, the FOIA, there has, the, the FOIA council and the code recommends a reduced, be able to give transparency and movement. Now, normally, on, throughout the years, you, you get FOIA requests for billing permits, you get titles, searches, you know, normal day-to-day housekeeping, what we call housekeeping stuff. You know, somebody's wanting to know, okay, what does this run, especially a lot of realtors. I get a lot of requests from realtors going, okay, what's appraisal on this? Where's the tax, where's the ID card? But I'm not getting too far out, but they're very simple. And that's what we can handle on a day-to-day, we'll handle those in-house with us, we won't charge those. But as we keep the fee schedule down, which we will, and we'll have discussed this, if, if it comes up to one of the big ones, then if it's tying up staff for long durations and multiple staff, then that's one we'll charge. And we can only charge legally by law also the, the rate that we make. If, so if I'm using somebody that's fifteen dollars an hour, I can only charge fifteen dollars an hour. So I can't, I can't make any money on it. But we're, we're going to still be conservative with it, just as a separation, you know, as this. If you look around the ninety five counties, and if you throw in the other towns of one hundred and thirty three, all of them together, the majority of them, either they are an attorney or this. I, I had done this for thirty years, I was trained as a FOIA officer through the state, so I had continued this as not, at the time I was, I was doing it, majority of them, on my own to save county money. And that's, that's just the way it is. No disrespect to my, Will sitting here as attorney, I just did them on our own, and we handled them on our own and reported on our own. But we will still, get back to your question, we will keep it suppressed. So everybody has an opportunity, they will get what they want, we're very transparent. That's why you released, as one, as you know, on the landfill, I think, you know, three or four hundred documents. And that was it. So to be transparent, that's the way the board wants to move, and that's the way they'll move forward from here on out, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lester, I just wanted to make sure to clear that up, because I did get a lot of questions about that.
And I hate, and I'd hate to get, took so long to get to the, but I was trying to get everybody assurance that if you want anything, come and ask me.
Well, I, I do appreciate that, and the only other thing I have, Isaiah one seventeen House, we're doing a lemonade weekend this weekend, July twelfth through fourteenth, if you look on the Facebook page, all different people, it's competition, they're getting together lemonade stands, come out and support it. The lemonade is free, but please donate, but we're doing all different stands. And so just check, see which organization you want to patronize personally, we'll be out here at the ballpark, so come see us. But I appreciate y'all, have a good day.
I'd like to also address a situation that I think we all, in all of our area counties, have these, either due to road construction, but I had, there's a couple of fatalities on Route sixty seven in Swords Creek. And now with my discussions with VDOT, they say that there's, could possibly have been some slick roads or some things that had spilled on the road. I would like to request that anytime we have these issues, that a lidded sign from VDOT be posted in regards to this situation. I mean, people that are driving on these highways or on road construction areas and stuff like that, if they don't know, they, you know, it, it's imperative to them to slow down or to, to know there's any kind of oils or things, but I think VDOT needs to put a sign up until the problem's fixed. So, you know, I've had conversations, but if we as a board could look at our area districts, and when there's pending construction or things that are going on, I think we need a lidded sign to inform our citizens what's going on. So the second thing I have, on August the third, at the New Honaker Amphitheater, they're having, it's free to the public. We're going to have Carson Peters and Iron Mountain and sixty seven northbound Bluegrass Band there. Bring a lounge chair and come out, enjoy the, this is the first Route eighty festival that's going to take place, and they have plans to continue to have these types of events. So I just wanted to advertise that for them, so I can go home and be safe. I do, I wrote that down three times, just so I wouldn't forget, so. But I do, I do want everybody to come out and enjoy it, bring a lounge chair and just enjoy the festivities.
So are they having a ribbon cutting that day?
I, they're not big into ribbon cutting, I'm not big into ribbon cutting, but we're just wanting to kind of advertise. We're going to advertise, but I think they are going to have a ribbon, ribbon cut. My wife is. Four to nine. And, you know, if anybody can motivate you, Ms. Wallace can, with the, working on grants and getting things done and, and offering her assistance and help in that regard to who to talk to and who to apply for. But my wife has been able to get six grants to be able to help the, the town move forward and bringing these things here. I want to thank you, Ms. Wallace, for offering up that help and, and any kind of information that you'd be willing to provide to us to be able to get these things. It's, it works, and it helps our region, so I'm, I'm really grateful.
I can't give away all my secrets.
That's what you've told me before.
Good, thank you, sir. All right, okay. That being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Everybody, all in favor, signify by saying aye.